Good morning, everyone. I know I'm a minute behind, please forgive me. It is good to be with you, always grateful for this time we share together on Thursdays. We're going to continue our Bible study series, Re encountering Jesus. This is session ten. I have been blessed in my prayer preparation and reflection on this for being able to see Jesus clearer, better, more faithfully, as I attempt to be a better disciple of Jesus. I'm praying that anyone that has joined us and is joining us today also is being blessed and you are presented with the opportunity to see Jesus faithfully through the text and even through the resources that we share with you that I'm using in preparing, the secondary sources I'm using in preparing our sessions. Again, thank you for joining us. Let's pray, we can get right into it as we continue going forward. Gracious God, we thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for keeping us and thank you for bringing us back together again. We ask for your presence to be with us and among us. We know you are everywhere, all the time at the same time. We also know that your Holy Spirit lives inside of us and so we ask you to bring us on one accord. Open your word up to us, open our hearts, our minds and souls to receive your word and then give us some sense of what you would have us to do as individuals, as family and as a community of faith in accordance with your word and your perfect will. We thank you for this opportunity. We are excited to hear from you blessed now in accordance with your perfect will. In your son, Jesus' name we pray, amen. Alright, again, we're doing session ten. We're looking at Jesus' ascension. As I've shared previously, there are five aspects of Jesus' finished work. His birth, which we'll get to in a few weeks, I saved that for December. That is a time of year that we're already reflecting on the advent of Christ. I will be preaching through Luke's version of Advent during that month and so it just works well then. So we'll go through that in a few weeks. But his birth, his life, and we went through that in the session we had on his mission, his death, we talked about the crucifixion two weeks ago. Last week, we talked about the resurrection and then we have the ascension. And so we're going to begin to look at it, look at it today in detail. When we come back in two weeks, we'll take a break for Thanksgiving. But when we come back in two weeks, we'll look at the two advocates and that will have something to do with the ascension. But today, I'm gonna do my best to share biblically what the ascension is, the significance of the ascension and then some responses that Jesus invites us to have as a result of the ascension. The handouts are available on the website. I sent Jen and the media team, I sent them the outline with some typos, so you'll see in the header, the Jesus I never knew. That is one of the secondary sources they were using. I put the wrong thing up there and the wrong number. That was my fault, please forgive me, but we'll have that updated when I finish. I'll go update it and send them the correct information. But this is Re encountering Jesus, session ten. And so let's begin. What is the ascension? Of course, we know that the ascension is Jesus' return from earth to heaven. He comes down in his birth from heaven. You know, Jesus has existed forever. But Jesus came down from heaven to earth in his birth. But the ascension is Jesus returning from earth to heaven. Read that in Acts, chapter one, verses six through eleven. Let's go ahead and read that, in fact, and as we read that, that we can have this fresh in our minds as we go through some of the details that are helpful for you and I. Again, Acts, chapter one, verses six through eleven says, "Then they gathered around Jesus and asked Jesus, Lord, are you at this time going to restore the kingdom of Israel?" "Jesus said to them, 'It is not for you to know the times or dates the Father has set by his own authority, but you will receive power when the Holy Spirit comes on you and you will be my witnesses in Jerusalem and in all Judea and Samaria and to the ends of the earth.' After he said this, he was taken up before their very eyes, and a cloud hid him from their sight. They were looking intently up into the sky as he was going, when suddenly two men dressed in white stood beside them. Men of Galilee, they said, 'Why do you stand here looking into the sky? The same Jesus who has been taken from you into heaven will come back in the same way you have seen him go into heaven.'" So again, the first aspect is him going up into, back to heaven. And when he went back to heaven on this cloud, his elevation in space symbolized his elevation in authority and relationship. Jesus was showing the disciples in it when we read it, he's showing us physically what was happening cosmically and spiritually. And we talked about the crucifixion and some of its meaning and then the resurrection. All of this together is when Jesus is solidifying for all time the victory. He's conquering evil and he is reminding them, showing them, reminding us, showing us that he is in control, that he is in charge. So when Jesus goes back to heaven on the cloud, he is just giving a physical symbol and representation of what is going on cosmically and spiritually. Him going up and being seated at the Father's right hand is him being in charge, being re-enthroned and that there is a second bullet on our outline, it is a new enthronement for Jesus, ushering a new relationship with us and the whole world. Now, Jesus has always been king. He was king in that moment, he will always be king. However, there are some implications there and we can read it there, starting in Isaiah sixty-five, verses seventeen through twenty-five. So if you have your bibles, turn with me there and we can hear how Isaiah, thousands of years before, wrote this down, preached this sermon of what was going to happen in the future. God had revealed it to Isaiah and Isaiah shared it with the people he was ministering to and it's also there for you and I. And again, Isaiah sixty-five, verses seventeen through twenty-five. And we've heard this before and so contextually, we hear, we can hear a prophecy about Jesus himself and not some of, some of the other ways we've heard it taught, but it is about Jesus himself. "See, I will recreate a new heavens and a new earth. The former things will not be remembered, nor will they come to mind, but be glad and rejoice forever in what I will create, for I will create Jerusalem to be a delight and its people a joy. I will rejoice over Jerusalem and take delight in my people; the sound of weeping and of crying will be heard no more. Never again will there be in it an infant who lives but a few days, or an old man who does not live out his years. The one who dies at a hundred will be thought a mere child; the one who fails to reach a hundred will be considered accursed. They will build houses and dwell in them; they will plant vineyards and eat their fruit. No longer will they build houses and others live in them, or plant and others eat, for as the days of a tree so will be the days of my people. My chosen ones will long enjoy the work of their hands. They will not labor in vain, nor will they bear children doomed to misfortune, for they will be a people blessed by the Lord and they and their descendants with them. Before they call, I will answer; while they are still speaking, I will hear. The wolf and the lamb will feed together, and the lion will eat straw like the ox, and dust will be the serpent's food. They will neither harm nor destroy on all my holy mountain, says the Lord." This is about the end times, this is about what Jesus began, when he came to earth. This is also about when Jesus ascended back to heaven, he solidified it. That was it, it's done and we can share, as we heard in each of the sermons on Sunday in our, our series in Revelation. If we are faithful, we will serve and experience this kingdom that Jesus has already started right now and in the not yet. We can experience this unending presence of God now, we can experience the victory now and we will also experience it when we see Jesus face to face, when he comes back with this new heaven and this new earth. Again, this started then, this is what his people were waiting on and it came in a different form than they were expecting. And at times, that's what we experience too. We want God to do this or that and when we experience the real thing, initially, we may think that it is not adequate, but what we discover, it is for our best, it is for our good and the good of others and ultimately for the good, for God's glory. Then we see that John, chapter fourteen through John, chapter seventeen, that is the version in the Gospel of John of the upper room conversation that Jesus has with all of those disciples gathered. And again, it was more than just the twelve, there were other people in that room and they were all in that room having the conversation. Jesus was telling them what was going to take place. He was letting them know and encouraging them about what they were going to experience. And then in chapter seven, so he even prays for them and he prays for us about what we would be able to do and what we'd be able to accomplish once he was not physically on earth anymore. And I'll come back to this to unpack it at the end. But Jesus' ascension was also a blessing in the sense of what he did in this small geographical area in these thirty-three or so years, once he went to heaven, back to heaven, he then began to accomplish all of that through us all over the world. Okay, we'll come back and unpack that later. Romans eight, Meet Me in Romans, chapter eight, so we can also see what this new enthronement means. And I'm reading these scriptures because I want us to hear right from the Bible, right from God, what is said as opposed to our opinions and our perspectives. We want to hear it right from, from God. Romans, chapter eight, I'm starting at verse eighteen. It's what Paul was, was inspired to write down from God. "I consider that our present sufferings are not worth comparing with the glory that will be revealed in us, for the creation waits in eager expectation for the children of God to be revealed; for the creation was subjected to frustration, not by its own choice, but by the will of the one who subjected it, and hoped that the creation itself would be liberated from its bondage to decay and brought into the freedom and glory of the children of God. We know that the whole creation has been groaning as in the pains of childbirth, right up to the present time. Not only so, but we ourselves, who have the first fruits of the Spirit, groan inwardly as we wait eagerly for our adoption to childship, the redemption of our bodies. For in this hope we were saved, but hope that is seen is no hope at all. Who hopes for what they already have? But if we hope for what we do not yet have, we wait for it patiently. In the same way, the Spirit helps us in our weakness. We do not know what we ought to pray for, but the Spirit himself intercedes for us through wordless groans. And he who searches our hearts knows the mind of the Spirit, because the Spirit intercedes for God's people in accordance with the will of God. And we know that in all things, God works for the good of those who love him, who have been called according to his purpose. For those God, for those God foreknew, he also predestined to be conformed to the image of his Son, so that he might be the firstborn among many brothers and sisters. In those who he predestined, he also called; those he called, he also justified; those he justified, he also glorified." That's how we can be confident in our prayers, that's how we can be bold and serious about our prayers because we know that we're connected to God and each other through his Holy Spirit and the Holy Spirit can even, when we just have those prayers of, Lord have mercy, we don't know what to say and we just, we just sit there in silence. The Holy Spirit interprets our emotions, our feelings, our, our struggles. The Holy Spirit communicate that, communicates that to God the Son and God the Father for us. So there may be times that we don't know exactly what to say, but even in those times, we can be confident that God knows what's going on. God is hearing our prayers, hearing our hearts, hearing our minds and will respond. And we also have to remember that Jesus is interceding on our behalf. That's what Paul develops openly. He's inspired by God to let us know and let the original hearers know and we can have that confidence as well, that in our sufferings, it is not in vain. What we feel and what we're challenged about is not in vain. We continue serving and working with God and that Romans eight and twenty-eight that we quote, that is a major blessing and we quote it because we know that everything that happens, God can and will work it out so that it is for his ultimate glory. We may not always be excited about what we're experiencing, we might not like what we're experiencing, but God will use everything for his glory so that his ultimate will is done for his glory and our good. Then turn with me to Ephesians, chapter one, so we can read three verses that was written to the church in Ephesus that also unpacks this new enthronement of Jesus when he went back to heaven. It's verses, again Ephesians, chapter one, verses twenty through twenty-two, it says, "The power is the same as the mighty strength," that's the B clause of verse nineteen, "he exerted when he raised Christ from the dead and seated him at his right hand in the heavenly realms, far above rule, all rule and authority, power and dominion, in every name that is invoked, not only in the present age, but also in the ones to come. And God placed all things under his feet and appointed him to be head over everything in his church, which is his body, the fullness of him who fills everything in every way." That's it. Again, he was raised from the dead and this is also one of those places if we drop down, we'll get to that in a second. But here's a statement or summation from Tim Keller in one of our secondary sources. "The ascension, when understood, becomes an irreplaceable, important resource for living our lives in the world." The ascension is, is again a part of those, that five, those five actions that make up the finished work of Christ. Birth, life, death, resurrection, and then this ascension. Because he is still alive and he did not go and did not leave this earth the same way that everyone else has left. Every other human, every other leader of any philosophy or religion, when they left this earth, they left by death. Jesus did not leave by death. Jesus left by going on a cloud back to heaven. And he's also going to come back the same way. That's what we read in Acts, chapter one, together as we began. And when we understand it, that can remind us about someone and a person of Jesus Christ who is yet alive and everything we learn about him from Genesis to Revelation, it is true, it is still active and he is still working this thing out through you and throughout. He's already won the victory with his death and his resurrection. In his ascension, he's still working that out through you and through me. So again, this ascension, when understood, becomes an irreplaceable, important resource for living our lives in the world. So what is this significance? Stay right there in Ephesians, we'll look at chapter two and verse six. I want to read the verse and then I'll explain some of the implications of it. "And God raised us up with Christ and seated us with him in the heavenly realms, in Christ Jesus." Now, in some mysterious way, the Bible says that we are already seated with Christ in heaven and God works that out and reveals it to you and reveals that to me in various ways. But we are already seated with Christ in the heavenly realms in some shape, form or fashion. That is Jesus' availability for loving communication and fellowship. When we pray, we pray in Jesus' name because the Bible tells us that he is interceding on our behalf. The Bible tells us that what we ask in his name, that is in accordance with scripture, he will hear and God the Father will honor. That's also why we pray in line with scripture, we pray in line with the nature of God as revealed in scripture. We pray in line with the will of God as revealed to us in scripture. And we always end our prayers and even throughout our prayers, we ask in Jesus' name. Jesus is in power, Jesus is in authority, all the authority is in his hand, we are in his hands. And so we have this opportunity to have a loving communication and relationship. When we think about that and I think about it, it makes me emotional sometimes, that we have a direct line of communication with the Creator and Controller of the universe. And that is always fascinating to me. The more I learn about planets, the more I learn about universe, the more scientists are finding other galaxies and if you see how the universe looks, how beautiful that it is, it is just, it, it is, makes me be in more of awe, in more awe of God, more awe of Jesus and even more grateful and thankful in this time of Thanksgiving, more thankful that God is living inside of me in the person of the Holy Spirit. And that is the Creator of the universe. The Creator of the universe is that these scientists are finding. And that is amazing that a part of this ascension is it is a reminder that we can have a loving communication and fellowship with the Creator of the universe. We have his ear, we have his heart, we have an opportunity to have his mind and it is just amazing to me that we are presented with this opportunity and we can be a part of what the Creator of the universe wants to accomplish in the earth now and that if we believe in him as our Lord and Savior, that one day, we're going to see him face to face, be with him and rule with him in that time. So we have, as he has availability for loving communication and fellowship. So that is that mysterious way that we are seated in the heavenly places with God right now. Secondly, there on that second piece, under the significance of the ascension, Jesus is sublimely personal and powerful. We already read the Ephesians, one, twenty to twenty-two, but let's go back to Romans and read a few verses. We already read one of those Romans verses, but we want to look back at a couple of those. So turn to Romans five with me first and then we'll go back to Romans eight. Romans five, the first five verses of Romans, chapter five, says, "Therefore, since we have been justified through faith, we have peace with God through our Lord Jesus Christ, through whom we have gained access by faith into his grace in which we now stand, and we boast in the hope of the glory of God." Not only so, but we also glory in our sufferings because we know suffering produces perseverance. Perseverance, character, in character, hope. And hope does not put us to shame because God's love has been poured out into our hearts. That's the big piece. God's love has been poured out into our hearts through the Holy Spirit who has been given to us. Again, that's the personal piece. It is not a, it is not something that is only communal. Yes, there are communal aspects to our faith, but it starts with us individually accepting Jesus as our Lord and Savior, believing scripture and understanding and interpreting scripture through the lens of his finished work and we get to experience more and more, the longer we are in relationship with him, the more we cultivate it by reading the Bible, by praying, that is talking to and listening to God and continuing to have these times of studying together, studying individually and then living out what is in it. That, that's another major aspect of experiencing God. If we live out scripture by following the example of Christ, doing to the least of these and giving of ourselves, being generous and being loving, taking peace to people and not bringing confusion in their lives, all of that. If we follow Jesus' example, then our relationship with God is also enhanced. That's what it says, it is poured right into our hearts and it does, that's not in our collective. It is an individual understanding that every individual who comes into relationship with God through the finished work of Christ understands that Jesus died for all of us, he lived for all of us, he was born for all of us, resurrected for all of us and yes, even ascended for all of us. We can have that in our own hearts. Then that allows us to come together as a community of faith and even as families to live that out and we experience that personal and powerful relationship. We already read Romans eight and twenty-eight and drop down with me to Romans eight and thirty-four where it says, "Who then is the one who condemns? No one. Christ Jesus, who died more than that who was raised to life, is at the right hand of God and is also interceding for us." Jesus is in a prime position, seated on the throne at the right hand of God. And the right hand of God also is indicative of when we look at the Bible of power. That reminds us that he is full of power of the universe and that's who we have personal access to, personal relationship with, that then plays itself out communally in how we should live with the Creator of the universe. We also can know that we are forgiven, accepted and delighted in by God the Father. And there's two places we can read and look at that. Hebrews, chapter seven, so turn there with me. That's the first place, Hebrews, chapter seven. We're only going to read verses twenty-three to twenty-eight, but the entire explanation, if you'd like to read it, is that entire chapter seven. And it's a, the writer of Hebrews goes into this explanation about the high priesthood. Those who received this letter were of Jewish descent, so they were very familiar with what priests did in the temple. And he is explaining, or he or she is explaining what happened and, and to their church and explaining to them how they can understand that Jesus is the real priest. He is the high priest and how he took the place of the high priest, particularly with his death in comparison to the sacrificial system at the, at the beginning of time and we can find throughout the Hebrew Bible and the first five books of the Bible, particularly Leviticus. And here is what is said in those verses, twenty-three to twenty-eight. "Now there have been many of those priests, since death prevented them from continuing in office, but because Jesus lives forever, he has a permanent priesthood. Therefore, he is able to save completely those who come to God through him, because he always lives to intercede for them. Such a high priest truly meets our need, one who is holy, blameless, pure, set apart from sinners, exalted above the heavens. Unlike the other high priests, he does not need to offer sacrifices day after day, first for his own sins and then for the sins of the people. He sacrificed for those sins once and for all when he offered himself. For the law appoints a high priest, men in all their weakness, but the oath, which came after the law, appointed the Son, who has been made perfect forever." Again, in those Acts, those priests would do one offering to ask God forgiveness for their sins so they could be pure before they then made those sacrifices and ask God for the forgiveness of sins for all the people in the community. Jesus never sinned, so he never had to do that, but then he became sin for you and I and we can go directly to God and ask God forgiveness for our sins because he made the ultimate sacrifice. He died for all of our sins, he became sin so that all of us can go to God when we sin and we understand what sin is and ask God for forgiveness of sin. And we are already forgiven. We already are seen by God the Father through God the Son because Jesus died for you and he died for me. So we can know we are forgiven, accepted and delighted by God the Father and that's there again, the third bullet under that second heading of the significance of the ascension. One more verse that unpacks that we are forgiven, accepted and delighted in by God the Father. First John, chapter two, verses one and two. "My dear children, I write this to you so that you will not sin; but if anyone does sin, we have the advocate with the Father, Jesus Christ, the righteous one. He is the atoning sacrifice for our sins and not only for ours, but also the sins of the whole world." Again, we can know because of this. Again, we can know because of the ascension that we are forgiven, accepted, and delighted in by God. And then turn with me to Luke chapter ten, verse sixteen, these are one of those um, convicting yet exciting verses of scripture uh, for me, Luke chapter ten, verse sixteen. Luke chapter ten, verse sixteen. Whoever listens to you listens to me, whoever rejects you rejects me. But whoever rejects me rejects him who sent me. Now, Jesus in that passage, he sent out seventy-two of his disciples. And he gave them instructions, he gave them encouragement, he gave them directions. Those same encouragement and directions apply to us. He has sent us out into the world to communicate what he communicates in his word, to live out what he lived out, to be the examples of him all throughout the world. And so that's what he says to us, to whoever listens to us when we're communicating scripture, when we're living out scripture, when sincere disciples listens to him, he's doing that through us. But then here's the encouragement, while we shouldn't get mad at people and, and be mean to people and evil at people that are frustrated, whoever rejects you rejects me. That is, we don't have to force people to do anything, we don't have to manipulate people, we don't have to do anything, that we live it out, we communicate it, and we trust in his power that he's doing it through us. Sometimes it's, it's, and I shouldn't say sometimes, when people don't want to hear about God, hear about scripture and all of that, it may not have anything to do with us. Now, if we've done some things uh, to, to sully people on the church and sully people on scripture, then we need to ask God forgiveness for that and ask God to repair, uh, repair that later on. Their church is real, there are some people who have issues with God because of what they have experienced in the church. There are some people who have issues with God uh, because of what uh, has happened in some of these events that have happened and are reported about the church. But God is more powerful than that, there are, uh, there are churches where that does not, where those negative things do not happen. There are good pastors who do not abuse their flock, who do not take advantage of their flock, who really have the heart of God. And we have to make space for that, have to make space for people to work through that and whatever way they choose to work through that while we trust God to be with them and working that out. Um, and, and so we can be a part of that. So we cannot, we, we should not be mad at people if we try to have a conversation with them. And, and let me even say that it is not even necessarily our responsibility to try to have a conversation with people about church and about God. If we live out the Bible, God will create opportunities for us to have that, people will ask us questions. I had to learn that myself, uh, and in some ways the hard way. People know that I'm a pastor, people have known that I'm in ministry. People know that I went to school to study the Bible and to learn how to communicate it. Um, and I know I have much more to learn. People will ask me questions if they want to. My responsibility, what I'm held accountable for by God is living it out. More than anything, more than teaching, more than preaching, more than anything I say, is what I do and how I do it. If I live out the Bible, if I follow Jesus's example, the same way that people were drawn to Jesus because there was something different about him, people will be drawn to Jesus through us. And then those conversations will happen organically, you all know I talk about the importance of organic food and everything else that we put in our bodies, it's the same principle spiritually. If we live out the Bible, if we follow Jesus's example, those opportunities to have conversations will happen organically. And then we are prepared to communicate our testimony and communicate the Bible in a loving gracious way and God will then do the rest, that's all, that's all we can do. We don't even have to try to have those conversations if we're living out the Bible. And when that happens, God will communicate through us whether it's actions, words, a mixture of both. And sometimes we were just the seed, the seed plant, somebody else will water, somebody else will see the harvest and participate in the harvest. And we leave those roles, those assignments up to God, and we'll discern what role we play and we do that and nothing more. And let God do what God does, even when it comes to the healing that needs to be done of people spiritually from what they may have experienced negatively with the church, which then impacts their relationship with Jesus, with the Bible, uh, with God and ultimately with his church. Uh, I can encourage Second Baptist as our pastor, we're going to do our best to live out scripture as a church and as individuals, to be a center for holistic ministry to be done, to for us to do it together, and we're going to trust God for God to send people here if God chooses to. We're also going to trust God to send people to the churches he wants them to be a part of because we're all on the same team. So that is all every church is assigned to do, be a center of ministry. And when I say the church, I'm talking about the people that make up a body of believers. God has blessed us with the building, we're going to be good stewards of it, but we're also not going to get confused about the church being God's people more than it is about a building. That's what we've been thrust into uh, involuntarily in twenty-twenty, and we are embracing it and we are still doing ministry, and I thank God so much for your continued support and your continued activity, and that is what we're going to do. Jesus is carrying on his work through the body of Christ, that's what this Luke ten and sixteen is about, in fact, that whole uh, passage there, verses one through twenty-four, that Jesus is carrying out his ministry through us. And here is this statement of summation from Philip Yancey. Jesus came to the earth with the goal of leaving again after transferring his mission to others. And he is still in the business of transferring his mission to us. When we believe in him, we are then deputized to live for him so that he can reach more people. Now, does he have to do this? No, but he loves us so much, he's so gracious that he invites us and involves us in his perfect will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Again, Jesus came to earth with the goal of leaving again after transferring his mission to others, okay? Now, we see what the ascension is, we move to the significance of the ascension. Now we are confronted with what our responses to the ascension. The reasons I say we're confronted with that is Jesus took the risk of being forgotten. If Jesus stayed on earth, he could have gone anywhere because he's going to live forever, he does, he's living now, he will live forever. Jesus could have chosen, excuse me, Jesus could have chosen to stay on earth and travel himself throughout the earth, directly communicating who he is, what he's done for us, and impacting people in that way, the same way we find in scripture. Jesus could have chosen to do that. However, Jesus chose to go back to heaven on that cloud and he chose to give us the chance and the opportunity, the chances and the opportunities to be his representatives on his planet. Before he died, um, the writer of Matthew, um, does an excellent, excellent exposition. That is not to say the other, the other writers of the gospels don't, the other writers of scripture don't. But Matthew is, the endings of Matthew was among my favorite places of scripture as well because the emphasis is there in chapters twenty-four and twenty-five that before Jesus is arrested and he goes through the torture and then ultimate crucifixion, he tells a series of stories that emphasize what we should do while he is physically absent. You see there under that heading, under our responses, it says, Matthew twenty-four, verses thirty-six to forty-four. It talks about an owner leaving his house vacant. The next bullet, it goes to another story right after that, and Jesus is just talking to the disciples, telling them what's up. He, an absentee landlord puts his servant in charge. Then he moves to a wedding scene and the bridegroom arrives so late to the wedding that the people that were waiting on him, they get drowsy and they fall asleep. Then he moves to a master distributing talents among his servants. And then he leaves and put those servants in charge of those talents. And there was a dual meaning with talents of what we know as talents in terms of our gifts, uh, what we're good at, what we're passionate about, and how we should use that for God's glory. But then there is also some financial implications and we can be reminded that everything that we're given is given by God. And Jesus gives some instructions about what we should do and we see in the responses of that master. And then he ends chapter twenty-five with the master returning, the son of God returning, the son of man returning. But it also is revealed to us that the whole time, the master has been present, but the master has taken on a disguise, and he took on that disguise for centuries. And that disguise is uh, there for us, and it says, this is the disguise that he puts on. I want to read it, it's in verses um, thirty-five uh, through thirty-six the first time, and he repeats it there in that passage, but it says, for I was hungry and you gave me something to eat. I was thirsty and you gave me something to drink. I was a stranger and you invited me in, I needed clothes and you clothed me. I was sick and you looked after me, I was in prison and you came to visit me. That's what he is saying to his sheep, the people who obeyed him and followed him. And he says, when we see people in their predicament have their needs being met. And what, how we respond to them is how we respond to him. Sometimes we miss seeing and experiencing God because we've, we, we are and have been looking in the wrong places. Based upon these passages, as well as throughout scripture, God identifies with those who are in the greatest need spiritually and practically. That's who Jesus came for and went to. That's who you and I should go to, in fact, that's who you and I are sent to. Uh, this whole political season, uh, what we've seen exposed once again in twenty-twenty uh, is an alarm sounding that should wake us up if we were asleep. And should give us even more passion if we are already participating in the, in the needs of people being met. There are a lot of needs that are out there, and I know sometimes when we wake up in the middle of the night, we see commercials. If we're watching news channels during the day, we see commercials about needs all over the planet in developing countries. And I say developing countries, we have historically said third world countries. Um, but that can be uh, discriminating in a sense because that puts that part of the world third, other parts of the world first, and that isn't a faithful way to communicate that because if the earth is the Lord's and the fullness thereof, God loves us all the same, then we shouldn't be ranking parts of the world. So in the developing countries, we see those commercials about mission trips and sending money to aid in meeting those needs, and we should participate in that. However, there are people right around the corner, maybe next door, maybe right across the street that have those same needs, and in many ways, their needs are being ignored. We see how some politicians, some public policies ignores the needs of those in poverty. And we see how, how certain, not only federal but local and state policies ignore the needs of those in poverty who need healthy food to eat, who need good access to insurance, good access to healthcare, preventative healthcare, not just treatments after they've gotten sick. Uh, we see how corporations are making money off of the prison system and we see some of the deficiencies in our law enforcement. Uh, we see the issues of housing and how uh, certain communities have been abused with the laws and the policies and the housing. We see the issues with clothing and even how some of the places where our clothes are made are problematic and people are putting hazardous situations, even when it comes to where some of our food come from. And if we don't know that, we should do that research because that is a piece of us living out our faith as well. And so what Jesus is saying in all of this, I'm not physically present myself, but I am physically present through my disciples. And he is physically present and experienced with his disciple, when you and I live out scripture by following his example, by understanding and interpreting scripture based on his finished work. And as we do that and people experience him, particularly when we need, we are part of meeting people's practical needs, then their spiritual needs are met. Oftentimes, we think we gotta go for the spiritual first. If we just live out what Jesus lived out, there is a thing of practical salvation because when people have their needs met, they're grinding poverty, they may not be open to their spiritual needs being met. They could be, could be not, it's a lot of different uh, nuances, and we know this with our own mental health. If we're in a bad place, we may not need scripture quoted to us, we may need some other need being met. When we think about when we're hungry and we get hangry, or we're hungry and we're in a meeting, we're hungry, we're in class, we may not be able to focus because our bodies have been created by God with those sensors and those triggers. And we really consider some of those basic necessities of life. If those basic necessities of life are met, we're in a better place holistically, we're also in a better place spiritually, and we can hear from God. When people see Jesus's disciples doing what Jesus did, when people see the church doing what Jesus did, that is going to make God more attractive. And it is not going to be what they can get from God. It is going to be them seeing the nature of God in us and in his churches and in the body of Christ. And then they will want to be a part of doing what God has always wanted us to do and meeting the needs of his people. Here's a statement of summation and we're done, I want to read the scripture first. Second Corinthians, ch- chapter four, verse seven. Second Corinthians, chapter four, verse seven. But we have this treasure in jars of clay to show that there's all surpassing power is from God and not from us. In Philip Yancey's words, what Jesus brought, the church brings to. That is, when we are the church as God intends, as Jesus intended. The same thing he brought to people when he was here on earth physically, he brings to people through us. When he got on that cloud and rolled it back to heaven, what he was showing us and telling us is now it's on you. I'm going to do it through you, but now it's on you. I showed you what to do, I've told you what to do, I'm leaving on record what you should do, not do it. I told you I have all power, I told you I'm going to send the Holy Spirit, I'm going to do it through you. So don't just say you gonna pray for people, you just think about people, do it. And do it in every area of your life, do it personally, do it publicly, do it politically. And take it serious in every area of your life. Do the research and live out your faith in every area of your life, just like I've shown you, just like I've told you. And if you need a reminder, guess what, I'm leaving it on record for you. Come back to me through my word, read it, I'll show it to you as many times as you need it shown to you. You stay connected to me, I'm going to stay connected to you. And we're going to accomplish my will on earth as is in heaven. That's what the ascension is, that's what it means biblically. I was heavy on reading scripture. I was heavy on reading scripture so that we can hear right from God about the ascension. All right. That is it for today. So again, remember, what Jesus did and showed and said on earth when he was here physically. He ascended and he gave us the ball to run with it. Now let's run with it, I thank you for joining us, I invite you to join us on Sunday at noon. As we hear a Thanksgiving message, um, as we are in this season of uh, being thankful. We should always be in seasons of being thankful, but we know this time of year is when we accentuate that thankfulness. I appreciate you joining us, I pray that this has been helpful. Hope you have a great rest of your day today, Friday, Saturday, and I'll see you on Sunday at noon. I love you, take care, stay safe, be wise.